This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I'm gonna call this meeting of the Sweetwater City Council to order. I'm gonna ask Chief Madden to give the invocation this morning and Councilman Castro to lead us in the pledges.
Could you pray with me? Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this glorious day, wonderful weather, the chance of rain that we have in the forecast. We pray that you will let it rain and that you will replenish the earth, turn the grass green again. Watch over all that we do today, help us to be good examples of Christians, be good to those around us, to show the love that you have shown to us. Forgive us of our sins, these things we pray in Jesus's name. Amen.
Please join in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas state under God, one and indivisible.
All right, we'll now move to item four, which is discuss, consider, and act upon approval of minutes for meeting held on April the 14th, 2020.
I move approval of minutes.
Grant, Jerry, a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Okay, item five, this meeting will be closed to in-person attendance by the public. A temporary suspension of certain provisions of the Open Meetings Act to allow telephone and video conferencing public meetings has been granted by Governor Greg Abbott. These actions are being taken to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 by avoiding meetings that bring people into group settings and in accordance with section 418016 of the Texas Governmental Code. At this time, do we have any callers who wish to comment or emails that need to be read?
Yes, Mayor, we do, and we're gonna have Dana do that for us. We have three emails that we received as of this morning, and he's gonna go ahead and read those to the group right now.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
I'm gonna read these verbatim, the way that we did receive them. The first email was received April 26th from Holly Reyna, and it reads, "I have a concern about the city pool being closed through the summer. There has been no official announcement about the pool not being open to the public, but I have talked to several people and they have been told no pool for the summer due to possible shortfall in operating budget caused by the COVID-19 virus and the social distancing affecting the sales tax revenue. I can understand the shortage of revenue. What my question is, what will the older kids have available to them when restrictions ease and the kids have nowhere to go? The pool allows kids to burn off energy and have somewhere they can meet their friends. I know that the city spent three-quarters of a million dollars to create the splash pad, but it was made for the smaller kids. The bigger kids have nowhere to go, will be at the splash pad pushing and shoving the little ones. They could tear up the new equipment, which is not made for them to use. I also talked with the city of Colorado City because they had their pool closed last year. The city secretary told me that they experienced a jump in juvenile crime over the summer last year due to the pool being closed during the summer. When I mentioned that our pool would be closed this year, her immediate reaction was, 'Good luck with that.' The kids had too much free, unsupervised free time. Maybe I am uninformed and need more info, but at this time, all I see is kids with almost four months of energy and no safe place to go. Thanks, Holly Reyna." Second email received on April 28th of this year, 2020, from Luann Cumby. It reads, "There are rumors that the city pool will not open this summer, but I have seen no formal announcement on it. Is this true, and if so, what is the reasoning? This decision impacts such a large part of our community. Our kids and their families need a place to go this summer if the virus had diminished enough and we are opening back up our city. We don't want these kids roaming our streets with nothing to do. Also, it employs so many of our people in the community. I would hate to see all of these people without jobs. I feel like the community needs to know. Thank you. Sincerely, Luann Cumby." Third email received, received on May 5th, 2020, from Tiffany Reed. "My name is Tiffany Reed. I am a teacher at SHS. I was told the pool in Sweetwater is not opening this year. I feel like this is a huge blow to the kids this year. I understand money might be tight, but I'm sure if you let the community know of the struggles for the pool, people will help. But not having a pool for the kids is so sad. We need this for them and for them to have a place to go this summer and have something to do. I feel as the pool keeps a lot of kids out of trouble and it keeps our high school kids employed, which in turn keeps motivated and learned of the value of money. Plus, they get their CPR certification. Please help our high school students save and help pay for college. Please reconsider. Our pools in the area are opening for their kids. Sweetwater needs to do the same for theirs. We are Sweetwater Strong. Thanks, Tiffany L. Reed, 325-829-8868." That was the last email.
Okay, do we have anyone else? Okay, we'll now move to item six, which is the execution of oath for office for Mr. Kerry Baker, City Councilmember District Two, which was administered by Patty Torres, City Secretary, on May 6th, and for Dr. Jared Peake, City Councilmember District Four, which was administered by Patty Torres, City Attorney, City Secretary, on May the 7th. The council would like to thank Mr. Jim Lee for his six years of service on the council and thank Dr. Peake for continuing to serve, and we would like to welcome Mr. Kerry Baker. Thank you all for your willingness to serve the council. Okay, now we'll start with the regular agenda. Before we begin on the regular agenda, I would like to remind each of the council members to please state your name after each motion or second is made. Okay, we'll now move to item seven, which is discuss, consider, and act upon a resolution regarding appointment of mayor pro tem for the city of Sweetwater and prescribing the terms thereof.
So no volunteers for mayor pro tem?
Do we wanna go back to a quarterly basis, or Jared, would you serve?
I'm available. I would rather have any single council member serve the entire year as mayor pro tem rather than going back to a quarterly basis. It gets kinda confusing and you're never really sure from month, one month to the next, who the mayor pro tem is. But I'm available if needed.
Dr. Peake? Castro? If Dr. Peake is willing to serve as mayor pro tem, I make a motion that we nominate Dr. Peake.
Okay, got a motion, second?
Grant, Jerry, I second that motion.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Now read the resolution into the record. A resolution of the city of Sweetwater, Texas, appointing mayor pro tem for the city of Sweetwater and prescribing the terms thereof. Okay, we'll now move to item seven B, which is discuss, consider, and act upon approval of mid-year agreement upon procedures report for the period ending March 31st, 2020, as prepared by Kathy Wilk, certified public accountant. Ms. Wilk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You can see the report is very brief, but it's the result of about three and a half days of testing, and there were six separate areas that were tested. And as you can see in the report, there were no exceptions in any of those six areas. Be happy to answer any questions or give more details.
Jared Peake, I'd like to make a motion that we accept this report and thank Ms. Wilk for her service.
Grant, Jerry, I second that motion.
All in favor? Any opposed? Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Okay, we will now move to item seven C, which is discuss, consider, and act upon approval of a resolution of the city of Sweetwater, Texas, finding that Encore Electric Delivery Company LLC application for approval to amend its distribution cost recovery factor to increase distribution rates within the city should be denied. Authorizing participation with Encore City Steering Committee, authorizing the hiring of legal counsel and consulting services, finding the city's reasonable rate case expense shall be reimbursed by the company, finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law, requiring notice of this resolution to the company and legal counsel. Is Christie there?
Yes, sir, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so this is a distribution cost recovery filing from Encore. We've gone to doing these annually, and we filed this on April 3rd with the Public Utility Commission. If this goes through as is, the impact to the average customer would be about $1.14 a month, which is a 2.3% increase. If that takes place, then the rates would go into effect on September 1st, 2020. And I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Do I have a motion?
Just one clarification. Denying of Encore's motion will shift this over to the steering committee and they will handle all the negotiations.
That is correct.
Jared Peake, so moved.
Do I have a second?
Grant, Jerry, second.
All in favor? Any opposed? The motion is approved. I'll now read the resolution into the record. A resolution of the city of Sweetwater, Texas, finding that Encore Electric Delivery Company LLC application for approval to amend its distribution cost recovery factor to increase distribution rates within the city shall be denied. Authorizing participation with Encore City Steering Committee, authorizing the hiring of legal counsel and consulting service, finding that the city's reasonable rate case expense shall be reimbursed by the company, finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law, requiring notice of this resolution to the company and legal counsel. Okay, we will now discuss and consider items seven D and seventy at the same time and make a separate motion for each one. Both items are in regards to a game room licensing and business regulation ordinance and modifying of the zoning ordinance related to game rooms. Now hear from Chief Brian Frieda.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
After several years of bantering back and forth trying to find a way to hold the game rooms accountable and make sure that things are operating on the up and up, and we've made several attempts to look at different cities ordinances on how they address the issue surrounding game rooms and where they're located at. And we had put together an ordinance or a proposal that was drawn from several different municipalities, and what we kept finding was is that each one of these cities was being challenged via the court system by the game room's legal counsel. They are very strong, they have a very strong voice, they challenge every ordinance to the nth degree, and what we finally have been able to come up with now is after all the rulings have been held and appeals ran and things modified and what's constitutional and what's not, our lawyers out of San Antonio, Daniel Santi and his staff, were able to do the rest of the research for us, and the ordinance that's before you is the result of that research and that effort. And so what we're seeking is your support and activation of this ordinance.
Any questions from the council?
Jared Peake, does this ordinance take effect with a single reading or will it require two readings?
Single reading, that's per our charter. If no other questions on that, would you like to address the...
I have several more questions. Bear with me while I dig through the ordinance. It appeared on the initial reading that there were three fees that were gonna be charged. There was an overall license fee, then a tag fee, an annual tag fee, and then an occupational tax. Am I misreading that, or is there just an occupational tax and an annual tag fee?
Okay, as far as the fees are concerned, there is the payment of an annual inspection and licensing fee, and then there is the fee per machine that's done annually as well. There are... I'm trying to find that section right quick. I think there is an option for an additional fee, but I don't see it being mandated by the ordinance and what that fee amount was. I believe it was something to do with code inspection. Inspection can go in and look at things, but I think that's all gonna be included into the annual on 17-125.
Jared Peake, got a question. Will the collection of fees and the issuances of tags be done by city staff, or are we going to outsource that?
On initial onset, it will be done in-house, sir, but I would like to get to the point where we may be able to find a online format. We're working on that right now as well through the rewriting of our... There's an itinerant vendor section that we're needing to get taken care of, and we're wanting to have those permits done electronically as well, but we're trying to find a couple of different vendors that can be successful in that endeavor.
Jared Peake, my next question involves the restrictions, controls, and limitations, and specifically the physical changes to the buildings where they have to have windows on two sides that are visible and unobstructed at all times. Do any of our existing facilities meet that requirement currently?
To be perfectly honest with you, sir, I believe that none of them right now, they have the ability to do in quick order. They've selected to tent the windows really, really heavily to keep anybody from being able to see what's going on in there. For instance, I believe it was almost a year ago, we had a strong-arm robbery of one of them here in town, and an officer had already driven through the parking lot and saw no activity whatsoever inside that facility. So it's really more of an approach for security and safety and to prevent the other activities that are going on inside these facilities. I don't know how else to address that, but we have so many other issues that are going on inside and immediately around these locations. We need all the visibility we can get to try and put it in their mind that everybody's watching.
Jared Peake, again, in reference to these other activities, and I assume we all know what that's in reference to, is this a problem that exists in all of these facilities? I know there's a couple that really have a pretty bad reputation, but is that widespread across all these facilities in town?
In some form or fashion, sir, they're... Unfortunately, we're seeing it almost the majority of them.
Next question. What purpose does it serve to limit the number of machines per facility?
That would be a legal question that I did not think to ask Mr. Santi and his staff. I would probably say that it's probably limiting itself to trying to... You limit the number of machines, you also limit the number of the capacity of people within the structure itself, which ties back to occupation. What's the word I'm looking for, Grant? As far as occupancy? Yeah, thank you. I was going occupational, I meant occupancy. But that would be my guess as to why that's in there, sir.
Grant, Jerry, question. What will... What effect will this have on the existing game rooms in town? Will they have the grandfathered in? Will they have a time limit to come within code?
Well, that's entirely up to them, sir. The only grandfather section that's provided in this is the 300-foot rule of any school, church, and other facilities that are listed in the ordinance. Those that are already where they are will be allowed to stay where they are at, just like liquor stores. There are some liquor stores that are pre-existing that are within the distance restriction of churches and schools right now. And so that's the only one. Now, as far as the covering of the windows and other things like that and getting these fees paid, it would be effective immediately upon y'all approving it. But you know, it's some... We've gotta take into account some education that has to take place and go around and make sure they know what the rules are for the game, and then to help them be successful in meeting these new rules.
Grant, Jerry, again, do we feel like without this ordinance in place, have we seen a greater number of game rooms per capita than other towns in our area? Have other towns in their area been able to limit the number of game rooms considering their population?
Well, honestly, sir, we have a unique situation here where we are, I would not say completely out of control, but we're rapidly approaching that point. I believe we're up to 20 in the city now, and one was set to open before we included them in the COVID shutdown. But we've... And since that 12:01 of the expiration of that last order that covered that, another one opened its doors at 12:01 a.m. the following day of expiration. So it seems to be something that is growing rapidly, and if we've gotta get this thing under control. It just seems like we're constantly dealing with stuff out of there. And as far as the other communities, there's some other communities that were, like I said, part of this charge to begin with, and so with the ups and downs of the different city ordinances and then some of the upper-level gambling cases that have been made by DPS, and they have investigators, a task force basically, in some of the places that actively work these facilities and have made cases. So it keeps them in check in those other jurisdictions. We've tried to bring some outside sources in to work these cases here. It's been unsuccessful due to the fact that they're shorthanded in other areas of their jurisdictions.
Jared Peake, chief, what will be the impact on the number of these facilities? Do you think if we enact this ordinance that we're gonna be closing down some of them just because they find the requirements of the ordinance too RS and too difficult to meet?
I would like to think the fact that they would close up is that they know we're watching them and that we're going to be actively making sure that they meet all the requirements of the ordinance, and there will be some of those that are less than reputable. We'll go ahead and pull the pin and leave our city, and those that are and have been above board and working right will take the time to do what they need to do to be successful as a business, just like any other business owner in the city.
This is David. Chief, besides the drugs, and let's just be frank with it about it, besides the drugs, what other type of illegal criminal activities are you seeing, are you guys seeing happening in these establishments?
We have had some, a couple cases where weapons are being sold, that's where they meet up to sell their weapons, so gun trafficking. We have had a few cases pop up of prostitution and alleged human trafficking. So it's... I hate to put it this way because I don't wanna lump them all in the same pool.
No, and we don't wanna do that either.
But it's... Some of them are just turning into basically assessable. It's... What we're seeing in some of these locations is ridiculous. We've had managers and owners that, when they're confronted with their guests, chase them around the facility with baseball bats. I mean, customers getting mad at another person stepping into their machine because they turned away for a second and they hit, and then you've got a fight going on. These are the things that have been going on inside around these facilities, and we're finally at a point with the courts where we can actively do something while we... And it gives us a chance to build up the case to take up to a higher authority, which be the county court.
You mentioned human trafficking. Have we come across any cases where those involve underage individuals?
We know that we've had some youth in these facilities, but I can't give you a number.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And a few other... One other thing is that we have had some documented cases of bootlegging of alcohol within these, some of these locations as well.
Grant, Jerry, do any of these locations have the license, the lawful license to sell alcohol?
No, sir.
Be freed as far as the operations, the limit to operation, hours of operation, I'm sorry. Are we seeing that these game rooms are staying open nearly 24/7?
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I, Ricky Castro, make motion that we approve this order.
Do we have a second?
Grant, Jerry, I second that motion.
All in favor?
And I would just... And I would I would just want a couple more comments before we vote on this. I don't want to defend these businesses. I don't frequent them. You know, and if they disappeared overnight, I wouldn't have any problems with it. I'm a little troubled, but the fact that we seem to be taking such a heavy handed approach to a specific business segment within our community. I don't have any problem regulating these businesses. I'm concerned this ordinance may go a little bit too far. Certainly, I could see restricting the hours of operation, restricting minors from admittance to them. And I don't have any problem as far as the the fees that are going to be assessed for business or machine. I am a little concerned about the requirements for what's essentially going to be significant remodeling for these businesses. You know, some of these businesses have been in place two decades, and now we're going to come in and require them to essentially remodel their business. I support in general the concept of regulating these businesses. I'm concerned this ordinance may go a little bit too far, and I would be interested in a little public feedback. So given that and given that Mr. Castro's motion did not receive a second, I would move that we table this motion for future consideration.
Dr. Peak, a second was made on Mr. Castro's motion by Mr. Jerry.
I stand corrected. And then I would encourage everybody to consider voting no on this resolution and then bringing forth a motion to table for future if if we can do it that way. If not, then we'll vote yes up or no, up or down on whether the other.
Be perfectly honest with you, Dr. Peak, I would like to go ahead and get the gay vote on it if at all possible, and I'll make sure by the next meeting in June. I'll do some additional research and I'll seek a modification to that particular section and see the what the feasibility is behind and what level of effort it's going to require. Many of them do have windows just up but I can look at some of this other stuff and have a modification to the ordinance before it's put into the actual code.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chief. I would be comfortable with that. The tanning, I don't think the tanning is there to shield activity inside. I think the tanning there is just just like the casinos in Vegas. They don't want their patrons to know what time it is because they don't want them to realize it's time to go home. But I would I would be comfortable if we can go ahead and pass it now, but revisit some of those specific features that I was a little concerned about. Thank you.
Yes, sir, I can do that.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Now read the ordinance into record. An ordinance of the City of Sweetwater, Texas, amending Chapter 11 License and Business Regulations of the City of Sweetwater Code of Ordinances, creating Article 8 Game Rooms and Amusement Redemption Machines, creating an occupation tax, creating an amusement redemption machine tax, providing for applicable rules and regulations, providing for repeal and servability clause and establishing an effective date. Okay, item 7E. Does anybody have any questions for Chief Frida?
Do we know how many of these businesses will be impacted by zoning change?
Well, as the stat, I think as the statute reads, I think if they're already in place, they're they are good. But I don't think any of them are going to be impacted by the zoning change. It's primarily for those new ones coming in that will restrict on where they can actually land in the city. Is that right?
Thank you. Move adoption of the motion.
Yes. I have a second.
I, Ricky Castro, second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It's approved. An ordinance of the City of Sweetwater, Texas, amending Chapter 17 License and Benetia Resolutions of the City of Sweetwater Code of Ordinances, creating Article 8 Game Rooms and Amusement Redemption Machines, creating an occupancy tax created and amusement redemption machine tax, providing for applicable rules and regulations, providing for repealer cumulonimbus and servability clauses and establishing an effective date. Okay, we will now move to item 7F, which is discussed, consider and act upon approval of resolution supporting the pending grant funding of one patrol car unit for 2021. Chief Frida.
Thank you, Mayor. Once again, we have applied, as we do every year, for some grant funding in an attempt to acquire an additional new patrol car or patrol cars. This year, again, we applied for two. We received notification that we were approved for 30,000 towards the purchase of a patrol car. That no means covers the entire cost of the patrol car and the subsequent upfitting. But taking the 30,000 towards getting another patrol unit would help us significantly.
Chief, you've already applied for the the grant or you're going to apply?
We've already done it. And we received notification that we were getting it's already passed at the local level. It's going to the state, and then we'll be notified by the state that we've actually been approved for 30,000.
Do I have a motion?
I, Councilman Ricky Castro, make a motion that we accept this request.
Jared Peak, second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Now read the resolution into the record. Resolution of the City of Sweetwater, Texas, approving submission of a grant application for the patrol car replacement project for 2020. And now move to item 7G, which is discussed, consider and act upon city manager inning into a license and operating agreement for the opening of the Lake Sweetwater Bait Shop. Russell, Mr. Jones.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Council, if you remember last year, we came February the 12th, 2019 meeting, and we approved the to go offer requests for proposals for reopening of the Lake Sweetwater Bait Store. We had a couple of parties that were interested at that time, but never come through with the proposals. We were notified this year, early this year before the the COVID pandemic. And we had two parties that actually put in a proposal to us. And one backed out kind of at the last minute once the COVID really got started. And we've got the other that still wants to open this bait store and keep going with this. Received a proposal from Randy and Fonda Williams. And we believe that they've got a good proposal in opening the bait store again. I've got just a little bit of background. If you don't know Randy and Fonda, they they owned and operated Spikes Barbecue in Kingsland, Texas, was located on Lake LBJ. And from what I get from Randy, it was like a marina type setting. What they did is they turned that that building, they renovated it and sold it in 2009. Shortly after that, they moved to Roscoe. They renovated an old building downtown, and they owned and operated Blackland Smokehouse 2012, 2014. Shortly after that, they they bought a fifth wheel and was traveling around, worked in three RV parks. And Fonda worked in the office, dealing with the customers. And Randy worked outside in daily maintenance. So we kind of felt like they they have the experience and the know how to to run our our bait store. And that's a little bit of background on them. So I guess staff would like to propose to enter into this agreement. Take any questions if you have any.
If they're approved, Russell, will they be opening within a couple of weeks or?
We're going to have to iron that out. We would like to get everything agreed upon right now so that they can comfortably move in. They have some improvements that they want to do. They're going to install a vent hood system, which what we're going to do is we're going to offer a rental abatement for the first two years on the agreement. So whatever improvements that they bring to us for the building, we will then in turn take that off of the rental. In the the agreement, they're going to pay a $500 a month rent. But whatever improvements that they do for that, then we'll take that off of that rental. So would like to get this going. That way they can start doing their updates, and they know that they've got the the building in the agreement.
I, Councilman Castro, second the motion.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion's approved. City managers report.
Yes, sir, we'll move on to that. That's item eight. We've got we've got several. I'll do the first three and then turn the the last two over back to Russell and to Chief Frida for some announcements. The honk rally for 2020 graduates in the county, going to be all four of the schools in the county. We were approached by the by the chamber a couple of weeks ago about this. We worked with Tech Dot because they're going to want to go down a Tech Dot, excuse me, roadway. That being, where is that, on Elm Street? And so it's a honk rally that's going to be held Friday, this coming Friday. The lineup begins at 6:00 p.m. at the Nolan County Coliseum parking lot. They'll start their their trek down Elm Street South at 6:30 p.m. and and end on Ash Street, I believe. But it's just it's for for something to honor the a way for the community to honor the graduates of the of the high schools here in the county because they've they've missed out on a lot, as we know, with this COVID 19 epidemic or pandemic, closing the schools. The typical senior year would consist of meeting with your friends and having your end of year senior year parties and your prom and all that kind of stuff. They missed out on that, those poor kids, but in a small attempt to try to make some of that up for them, they'll we're going to we're going to hold this honk rally for them this Friday. I believe most of the most of the, if not all of the high schools are holding some type of a graduation ceremony, but it's going to be a lot different than your typical graduation ceremony. So this is something that that Karen over at the chamber approaches about. We, like I said, we work at Tech Dot to get permission to use their street, Elm Street, and then and then hold this honk rally for for our counties' seniors and their families as a special gesture. So we're we're proud of that and hope everybody can can go out there and wish them well as they as they graduate. The COVID 19 drive through testing, I realized that this flyer that's on that you see was for Saturday, May 9. We hear that there weren't a lot of participate, there wasn't a lot of participation from the folks here in Sweetwater and Nolan County about it. We think a lot of that has to do with, for some reason, the folks putting this on to state they're only giving us a 24 hour notice prior to the screening being held. So Friday, the notices went out to the public. And then Saturday, May 9, was was the date of of the of the mobile test collection at the at the Coliseum parking lot. So that's not a lot of time to to not a heads up time, if you will. You've got to register online and that registration web address is is on that on that flyer there. You can call. You got to get appointments. So it's a little onerous for for those that are wanting to get tested with not a lot of of lead time given. And so we think those couple of factors contributed to the to the low amounts of of traffic that we saw go through there on Saturday. There will be another another mobile test collection here in Sweetwater. We're assuming it's going to be at the Coliseum parking lot again. Because of the restrictions on the 24 hour notice to the public, I can't tell, I can't publicly say when that's going to be, other than to say it's going to be later in May. We'll give the 24 hour notice like they've asked us to, and then we'll see kind of where we go from there and how much participation or not we get at that at that second test collection. So I just wanted to update everybody on that. There's another one coming, and we'll let you all know 24 hours prior to when that is. The swimming pool and the splash pad updates, I wanted to to speak a little bit about this. It's been a hot topic in our community. We've been getting some feedback, some positive, some negative on on Facebook. And the emails, the three emails that Dana read earlier in this meeting all pertain to concerns about closing of the swimming pool. I just wanted to take a little bit of time here to go over some of the reasons why. And and we have had this out in the public realm on our website, in the newspaper, beginning. Let me just forward that slide there. We announced it on April 1st of 2020. It's it's not really a new thing that has just popped up. I think the since we're getting closer to summer and have had some hundred degree days, it's more on the minds of folks. Is the city pool going to open or not? But we did make our first announcement that it was going to be closed for the entire summer season on April 1st of this year. We are currently in a hiring freeze, and that's due to the our anticipation that sales tax will will go down. I would use the word drastically in the next several months due to the COVID pandemic and people losing their jobs here in the community, staying home, not going out, and retailers not being able to be open, those kinds of things. So in order to get ahead of that, we've made some decisions at the administrative level. And one of those was to put ourselves in a hiring freeze. So we we cannot hire lifeguards. Not without backtracking on that hiring freeze. And so you got to have lifeguards to have a swimming pool. Obviously, so we're also under governor's orders at this time. We can open if we wished, but we could only open the pool at 25% capacity at this time. And and so that would affect that would affect the the number of people, obviously, being able to come and enjoy the pool. That would affect the revenues that we would bring in at the gate and those types of things. Our Texas Municipal League Intergovernmental Risk Pool recommends caution regarding opening public pools. Now, the TML IRP, they they insure many of the cities. It's a pool of, not a swimming pool, but a pool of cities utilize their services for risk management and insurance. And in fact, we reached out to them earlier this week. And I'll just quote a little bit from their email. We see many communities decide it's safer to not open than risk the impact related to an outbreak that could be associated to the city's swimming pool facility. So we're looking at it from an from a COVID perspective, but really in Sweetwater, more from a of an economic perspective as far as making the decision not to open the pool for the summer. Other area cities are not opening their pools. I know that that one of the one of the emails that was read this morning saying there's there are cities around our area and they're all opening their pools. We did a survey. And here the here the cities that we know of right now in our area that are closed have made the decision definitively to close their pools for the summer 2020 season. That's Abilene, Coleman, Eastland, Brownwood, Ballinger, Roby, Big Spring, Mason, and Colorado City. Those that are, for whatever reason, sitting on the fence, we'll call them the maybes right now. San Angelo, they are in the middle of a hiring freeze as well, so they wouldn't be able to hire lifeguards, just like we're not able to hire lifeguards. So we were told that they're probably not opening, but but they gave us the the answer of of maybe. Other maybes in the area are Cisco Brady and Snyder. They'll open, but only if they can open at 100% capacity and not the current 25%. And that's, of course, as you all know, set by the governor. So the governor is going to go 25, 50, 75, 100%. It's going to take him a little while to get to that 100%. My thought is Cisco Brady and Snyder, by the time they get to the 100%, it a quality of life project, you can live without it, you can't live without calling nine-one-one and not having anybody show up, that's life or death, so you're not cutting, you're not cutting police, you're not cutting fire, you're not cutting EMS, you don't wanna cut employees because they provide valuable services, they pick up our trash to keep our streets and our parks clean and safe, et cetera, et cetera, but when you, when you gotta do something, and that's the point we're at, and you find that the swimming pool costs so much, we lose so much money on the swimming pool every year, that's the decision that needs to be made, it's not an easy one to do, it affects people, and we understand that and feel bad about that, but something has to give, and in my opinion, it's not gonna be police, it's not gonna be fire, EMS, or any of our employees, it's gonna be the swimming pool, and what helps with that, and I hope the community understands this, is the splash pad is a great alternative to the swimming pool, a lot of people that are gonna come use the splash pad are gonna forget that we ever had a swimming pool, and that's no exaggeration, um, because it's such a different type of thing, and, and you can run around and, and enjoy it and stay cooled off, and it's fun, and you can, there's just a lot to it, it's, it's a lot more of, of an active type of, uh, of a program than the, than the city pool is, so as soon as we're able to open the city pool, and hopefully that's next year, we'll, we'll do that, and then we'll get both back online, but, but at this point, because of a situation that came out of China and we had nothing to do with, but we've got to respond to, that's why we made the decision to close the swimming pool, and, uh, hopefully we get to open that splash pad as soon as we can, so if, and that might, that diatribe that was more for the public, uh, than the council, because I know that you guys understand, y'all gentlemen, understand what we're dealing with here with budgets and having to make cuts and those kinds of things, but a lot of folks throughout in the community, out in the public, uh, through no fault of their own, don't really understand the way that the city works, so I wanted to take a little time to kinda put things in perspective for that, and, and I thank you for your patience, uh, while I'm trying to explain all that, and I'll move on, I'll hand it over to Russell for some Tech dot construction updates.
Yes, sir, you might have already noticed, Tech dot is working, uh, in town, I've been in contact with, uh, Danny Escobar, he's the supervisor for the Nolan County Maintenance Office, uh, what they're doing is they're doing a scrub seal, uh, in town, and, um, the, the roads that they're doing it on, if you noticed, is on Elm Street, and they're gonna do, uh, Broadway all the way through town, and also, uh, they'll be doing, uh, Lamar from the interstate to, uh, Bradford Lane, and some of this will be connecting to some of their past seal codes, uh, and as I say, they're doing a scrub seal, and, uh, if you're not familiar with that, what it is, is they put the oil down, and then they come back with this machine, and, uh, it's got some brushes on it, and it kinda brushes the oil into the crack, so kinda make sure it gets in there, I'm not really familiar with it, and I wanted to kinda watch it, but to, to see, uh, how it compares to a, a regular, uh, seal code, but, uh, um, what they're planning on doing is, is they're blocking off the inside lanes, uh, they're putting it down, and then they're moving to different locations, and then they'll come back and then they'll do the outside lanes, so they will do all four lanes, uh, uh, complete all four lanes once they get that, that job completed.
Thank you very much, Russell, we appreciate, we appreciate that, and then we've got one more, it's an update from, uh, Police Chief Brian Frida.
Good morning again, um, as you, many of you probably already have heard, uh, one way or another, uh, last week, uh, I announced to the city manager and the rest of the directors of my retirement, uh, after eight years with the city of Sweetwater, which I've enjoyed immensely, and, uh, well over thirty years of law enforcement, it's, I find myself in a place where I, it's time for me to close a chapter, uh, in law enforcement, and, uh, but I'm opening a new chapter and, and was offered an opportunity to step into a city management role, and so as of July first, uh, I will be stepping in as the, uh, new city manager for the city of Ballenger, and, uh, I'm looking forward to that, that new chapter, that new adventure, um, we have, it's only an hour away, uh, Brody is going into his senior year here, he will be staying, uh, as well as his mom, and I'll be driving back and forth for the biggest portion of the year, uh, but, uh, we'll still be close by, and we'll still be keeping things here and our friendships and relationships here, and I wanna thank y'all for, uh, the time that I've had here and the experiences, and, um, I'll still be there for you, and I hope y'all still be here for me, so, uh, with that, I just wanted to make sure y'all knew that, uh, the rumors were in fact true, that I am retiring as your police chief. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
And Brian, on behalf of the staff, like, like, uh, I've said to you before, um, Sweetwater's losses, Ballenger's gained, so anything you need from us, as far as, uh, advice or counsel or whatever you need, you just, you just call us up and you let us know, and we're glad to help, we're glad to help, in fact, when we were doing the survey about the pools closing, and we got to Ballenger, I knew who to call, and he had the answer right away, he said, "We, Ballenger, are closing our pool for the summer," so I put it on the list, and I think, thanks for that, Brian, and thank you for everything that, that you've done, uh, not only here in your career as police chief, but in your career, in your total career as a law enforcement officer, we know it's, it's tough on, on the officers and, and their families, and you guys did it, uh, you guys did it the right way, the right way, so we appreciate you, appreciate your family, thank you.
All right, we'll now move to item nine, which is to enter into closed session, in accordance with section five-five-one-point-oh-eight-seven of the Texas Governmental Code, the city council will meet in closed session to discuss and deliberate regarding commercial or financial information that the government body has received from a business prospect that the government body in which the governmental body is conducting economic development negotiations, and to deliberate the offer of a financial and/or incentive to said business prospect, Project Jupiter. I've got a motion.
Make a motion, we're moving to closed session.
Second.
At this point, we'd ask anybody who's, um, on the calls, uh, this is a closed session, only available to the council and, and, uh, legal staff and certain other individuals on the staff, so we'd ask you to, uh, kindly hang up and, uh, and we'll go from there.
This conference will now be recorded.
Zach, did I get ahead of you there, I need to back up? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Call for a motion for adjournment.
Uh, Councilman Castro make a motion, we adjourn.
Have a second?
Right, Jerry, second.
All in favor? Motion passed.
Thank y'all, appreciate y'all.
Thank, thank everybody for being on here today.